Good evening and welcome to the February 4, 2025 Lawrence City Commission Meeting. Welcome to everybody. First, I'm going to ask Sheri to talk about the rules of the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Please silence your cell phones to minimize distractions during the meeting. When the mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. When prompted, select "Join as panelist." There will be a brief delay as your role changes. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. Please state your name and zip code before speaking. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. All comments will be limited to three minutes. The primary format for accessing or participating in this meeting is in-person at City Hall. Virtual access to view or participate in the meeting cannot be guaranteed. The chat function will not be monitored. If you have any trouble, the meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sheri. Okay, the first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Finkel-Dai, seconded by Little John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Motion passes five zero. Next on to the recognitions and proclamations, and we have one item tonight. It's to proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month. And today, I think we have Ms. Ursula Miner, President of the Lawrence branch of the NAACP here to receive the proclamation. Would you like to say something before I read it?
I just want to thank the city for...
Can you go to the...
Yeah, we want everybody to hear it, Ursula.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the city and the mayor for giving us a proclamation for Black History Month. It's very important to the NAACP and the Black citizens of Lawrence. We have actually partnered with the city on a few of our Black History projects, like putting a plaque at the pool currently that, at one time, the pool was segregated. And also, we worked on the Lynch Memorial Project where three Black men were hung on the Kansas River Bridge. And the city partnered with us, and we had a really nice event and gave them something that they didn't have when that situation happened. We are also still working on that project, and the city recently approved us to be able to move forward with putting headstones where the three Black men were buried in Potters Field, along with some other Black families that we discovered, and we'll soon have their stories out about what happened to them and how they ended up there. So I'd like to thank the mayor and the city for giving us this proclamation.
Well, thank you for the insider slaw. That sounds really exciting. We look forward to moving forward with those combined efforts. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation then. Thanks. "Whereas in observance of Black History Month, the city of Lawrence recognizes African Americans for their significant contribution to the shaping of our nation's identity and strengthening our country through high moral values and unyielding commitment to family, community, and service. And whereas during Black History Month, which is recognized by many countries, we celebrate the countless achievements and long-lasting contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, and political development. And whereas the city of Lawrence is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion as a fundamental characteristic of a healthy, vibrant, and thriving city, the presence and visibility of the Black and African American community continues to enhance the quality of life in the city of Lawrence. And whereas the city of Lawrence recognizes the historical injustices faced by the Black and African American people through targeted racial discrimination and violence, which conflicts with our core mission and vision. And whereas the city of Lawrence continues its efforts towards becoming a more equitable and inclusive community in which all residents, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions. And whereas Black History Month calls our nation's attention to the continued need to recognize and combat racism and to build a community that lives up to our core values. Now, therefore, I, Mike Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Lawrence. We encourage all of our community to take this opportunity to reflect on the past and present achievements of the Black community, as demonstrated by overcoming systemic challenges. Let us all work hard to ensure freedom, equity, and inclusion for all. Thank you, and she'll... Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. Members of the governing body may remove items for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments. So is there anything that any commissioner would like removed from the agenda at all? I don't think there's anything quasi-judicial, correct?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Finkel-Dai, seconded by Little John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is a work session items. We have two of them this evening. The first is receive an update on economic development website and the marketing video.
Good evening. Thanks, Kurt. I appreciate that. My name is Corey Wallace, and I serve the city as the Director of Communications and Community Relations. It's good to see all of you again this evening. Tonight, we have a very straightforward presentation. We really wanted to introduce you to our city's new economic development website. I do want to be candid about saying that this process began in August of 2024 under the leadership and direction of Britt Crum-Kano, our former economic development director. She explored potential website development vendors who operate in the space, and she selected a vendor known as Encore. We've been working with them consistently over the past few months and are pleased with our relationship with them. We'll continue to update the site as needed. So this is the launched site, and it exists as is, and we're pleased with the outcome here. But I want you to know that as the economic development strategy develops in the city, this website is easily updated to reflect the direction that we choose to go. I wanted to draw your attention to some strategic choices that Britt made to ensure that some key economic development priorities were addressed in this project. We are working to obviously collectively promote Lawrence for business attraction and retention. And so you can see some elements where we kind of drive you through how that looks for someone who's exploring Lawrence as a potential city for them to locate their business. So you're going to look at Lawrence advantages, which is the first dropdown menu on the left. You'll notice there's a lot of information about key industries that are here, and we really focused on a core bucket of three industries, excuse me, four industries. And I think it's important to note that there's intersections here with sustainability. There's intersections here with innovation, and there's a clear intersection here with our mission, which is to ensure that all can enjoy life and feel at home. Site selectors are a very specific population of folks, and they're going to look for a very specific kind of list of indicators that they might be well-received here in Lawrence. And so you'll see available properties. Hold on just one second. It's all good. Yep, thank you. So you'll see a number of different items for site selectors, including available properties. That's updated very easily. Business parks that are currently in our community, community data, and taxes and infrastructure. You'll notice that there are segments that were contributed to. This was a collaborative effort. We did include the Economic Development Corporation alongside the chamber in kind of building the content of the site, so it reflects a collaborative effort. But one of the things that I'm most encouraged by is the small business resources that are available here. It includes links to, obviously, the KU Small Business Development Center, Core, et cetera. And I see this growing and kind of emerging as we build those resources for smaller businesses. At this time, I'm open to any questions. I encourage you to drive through the site. I think there's a lot to see here. But what I want you to know is, most of these sites are built as the start of a conversation. And as we gain a new Director of Economic Development, it will be the direct line into connecting with that person who can help walk that potential business through their site exploration with us. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Corey, I just had a couple. Since I know, because we have partners listed on here, is there any possible way, and I don't know if this is, if this impedes on the, I guess, the purpose of the website, but just, we list our partners, but I know we don't have inner, there's not a direct interface to those partners. Is there a plan to, at least on that main page, have interface where if someone clicks on the chamber, they go to the chamber, if they click on EDC Commerce, so on and so forth?
That's an easy fix, yeah. There's an opportunity to do that, and I don't think there was any guidance that indicated that wouldn't be a priority. So yeah, we can make that change. I think it's important, too, to note that most people are going to find this site through search term optimization. And so this will hopefully be the start of their journey, but they shouldn't just circle around on our site. They should go to where they want to go. So no, Commissioner, that's not, that's not outside the realm of what we can do at all. Appreciate the suggestion.
And then one more, because I've been test-driving the site specifically under site selector and available properties. And I know, again, that interfaces with EDC, so this might be more of a question for the EDC site since it interfaces with our economic development site. And I noticed on the site of available properties, where there is an interactive map that shows you where the properties are. However, under site selector, we talk about incentives and taxes and infrastructure, and specifically under incentives, where some of these available sites do fall up under areas of incentives, i.e. opportunity zones. So just in speaking, not something directed towards you, but in speaking in the general atmosphere of, since we have partners here, that the sites that do fall in those opportunity zones, there's nothing that identifies them as that. So one way to kind of clean up having to kill two birds with one stone, not that I'm trying to kill any birds, is to at least identify within any sites that may fall into those areas where there are some, I don't want to say mandated, but strongly encouraging incentive packages for those areas that we identify that as that.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. I will say, I think that falls under kind of a strategic decision. That's an easy fix from a communications perspective. So I appreciate that comment.
And is this a site that we can manage ourselves in-house and add content and do whatever is necessary?
Yeah, I think that's one of the reasons that Britt selected this particular vendor is the vendors that are getting the most robust business are the ones that empower you to make as many changes as you can internally. So yeah.
Great. That sounds awesome. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions for commissioners, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none? Anything online, Sheri?
We do have one.
Okay.
Stephen Watts. Stephen Watts. Mr. Watts, we're not able to hear you.
I hear something over there.
Something.
Kurt, do you have any ideas?
All right, we're going to put it on hold here for just a second and see if we can get this AV situation squared away.
Do you see this, Kurt, on my screen?
Yeah. It usually works or it doesn't, so I'm surprised that we kind of heard it. It's not on our end, it's on his end, his microphone to us.
Okay.
Yep, because we did test the audio before the meeting, and it, everything...
Okay. So, Mr. Watts, I think we're having problems with your microphone. If you want to try it again, we can do so now, but otherwise, we'll have to move on.
Okay. And we do have another commenter that I'll get moved over.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Watts.
Yeah, we've had a few other pop-ups, so...
Okay, thank you.
And then maybe by then, Mr. Watts will be able to... Jeffrey Hepler? See if we can hear Mr. Hepler. No. Okay.
Must be on our end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, hold on. Oh, no, no, it should be working. What was that, correct?
I'd see Nora.
I'll keep speaking, hopefully test when you all can hear.
I can hear you now, Mr. Hepler. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Excellent. That's all I wanted to do, was help resolve that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got a troubleshooter online. That's awesome.
Steve Watts?
Yeah, can we go back to Mr. Watts? Is he still there or no?
Yes, let me see if he has come back in and rejoined the meeting.
Did he drop off?
Yeah, he dropped off, and I don't see him as an attendee, but we do have another speaker, so maybe he'll jump back on by the time we have that one.
Okay, that sounds good.
Getting moved over. Lawrence Accountability.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and ask that you guys hold the meeting, because quite to Kurt's dismay there, that was not a problem on our end. Everybody in the panel here online could hear Mr. Watts just fine. There was a problem on your end, so I think we need to hold the meeting, let Kurt get his shit together, and then let's have Stephen do his public comment, as he should have been allowed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take care of that.
Yeah, Mr. Watts is not in...
Okay, well, we could maybe allow him to talk, speak to that issue on the next item, I think, if we, since we had a technical problem on our end, if we want to move on to the next agenda item.
I was just going to say, make a comment real quick.
Yeah, sure.
Since there's no more public comment. Appreciate the work, appreciate the website. I think it has a good feel to it, and I think it's something that's helpful across, you know, a lot of fields. So I hope we continue to work with our partners on that, and I appreciate the work.
Yeah, I want to pop in as well, Mayor. I can't, second Vice Mayor Finkel-Dai, I appreciate all the hard work on the website. It's a great start, and I love the ability for us to go ahead and update it whenever we can. And it goes a long way to providing a resource for those companies out of town that we want to bring in, and also for those companies that are wanting to start in town. And what I'm really excited about is it's following along that idea of having a one-stop-shop ecosystem where people can go ahead and start their own businesses and find ways to, you know, find assistance for that and, you know, find it in an efficient and helpful manner. So thank you all for your hard work on it.
Mr. Sellers, anything?
I said what I needed to say earlier.
Thanks. Bales? Yeah, thank you. It's a, first impressions are hard to come by, and it's nice to have a good first impression with these site selectors. I appreciate the quality of the work and look forward to, hoping to lure some companies to stay and/or come here. So thank you.
And Mayor, Mr. Watts has rejoined the meeting. If you want to allow him to make his comments?
Sure, that'd be great. Mr. Watts, if you're still there, we're going to try to sign you.
Are you able to hear audio at this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The system is not on my end. I just wanted to say thank you. There seems to be a gross improvement with respect to what the Zoom participants are experiencing so far. Thank you for taking the time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the second work session item, which is to receive an update and overview of scope for the North Lawrence Comprehensive Corridor Study.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Melissa Seeben, Director of Municipal Services and Operations. I'm here tonight with my sidekick, Jeff Crick, from our PDS Division, our department, rather. And we're going to talk to you about the North Lawrence Comprehensive Corridor Study. It's a mouthful. We're pretty excited about this. It's been a work in progress since we shared this vision through our CIP last summer. And tonight, we're here to discuss what we've put together for a scope of work for this and receive any comments or feedback that you have prior to us actually letting the RFP. So do you want to start off?
Sure. Good evening, Commissioner. Jeff Crick, Plan and Development Services. So just to kind of lay the groundwork for what we're talking about with this study. The last time North Lawrence or the corridor was studied, as best as we can tell, was sometime in the late 70s and early 80s. So land use and the transportation corridor itself has not been studied comprehensively since probably then. And since then, we've also had a lot of things that have changed. We've seen the way that the airport has grown. We've seen the way that KTA and the Turnpike has evolved and changed. We've seen some changes with our transportation partners, including the railroads and KDOT. So as part of the scope of work that we're looking at, we're trying to look at this holistically, not just as a land use plan, but as an entire corridor plan. So it involves our partners with FEMA, with the water agencies, anything that involves the levy, all the transportation you can think of, from the airports down to sidewalks. We would put it in the scope on that one. So we'd be looking at ways that Lawrence Loop and those plans can be engaged as part of this, but also looking at all the different ways that we can connect to other resources. So one thing that we've always talked about in planning, and you've heard a couple times over the years, are quiet zones and the way that the railroads engage with the streets. And so taking a look at that and having those conversations with our partners. But it's also a way of taking a look at it and making sure that we're meeting all of the scope and intent in both the downtown plan that was recently adopted and also in Plan 2040 with the gateway and the approach as you come into Lawrence. If you think of that corridor, it's one of the very few ways that you can come to the city in multitude of different ways, but you all come into the same way. So if you come off of KTA, Houston, come over the bridge and that way. Airport, very similar thing. And so it's really one of those prominent gateway features of when someone's coming to Lawrence that they see. And so looking both at sustainability, looking at the environmental aspects of it, because that corridor's had a lot of changes over the years, understand how does industry affect that, how has things kind of moved and flowed over the last few years, but then also making sure that we take all the work in the strategic plan and really integrate it into that scope of work, making sure that we're meeting not just our outcome asks, but our commitment asks as part of that, including our sustainability commitments. So, it's kind of a real overview, real high-level overview of that. But just want to kind of also let you know is that that's one of those things that we talk about when we talk about long-term planning, is it's a holistic look at that corridor, and it's not something I think we've had in quite a number of years, if not many, if ever, and so we want to have an opportunity to do that with this plan.
Thanks.
And I also have Melinda Hager here, Assistant Director of MSO tonight as well, who was integral in working on our team to help develop the scope of work. I want to talk about the anticipated services that you would receive out of such a comprehensive corridor study. One is the engagement component. If you've looked through the draft, what you'll see is there's an intensive amount of engagement throughout the process, whether it's figuring out who are all the partners that need to be at the table, to working with them on ideas and coming back and forth, and then bringing it into the next segment, which is looking at all the existing studies that the city has done over the years. We have a wealth of information, I think there was 20-some of them, if I remember correct, that all play into a very comprehensive look at this corridor. And so, we want to be able to have that dialogue with the community as well around all of the different studies that we have out there that talk about anything from wastewater to stormwater to, you know, bus transit, to our airport, which is just finishing up a master plan. So, there's just a lot of data that we already have, a lot of information, a lot of ideas, and the question is, what does that look like cohesively as opposed to in an individual study with an individual look at an individual problem within that corridor? The next part of that is a market analysis and economic feasibility component, which is too interesting that we're here tonight with a little bit of a revamp on some of our information on economic development, but this would definitely play into that and bringing in the components of land use and zoning, while considering all of those studies that we have that say where we have expenses that we need to make, whether it's investment in stormwater management, or the levy-protected areas, or how rail impacts quality of life in the corridor. So, it's really comprehensive and it will take all of those into consideration when we look at what would drive the ability to pay for projects within the area that come out of the plan, and basically give us something that should be actionable and reasonable. That next component is refine the plan, so taking all that input, taking the market analysis, the existing information we have, to actually put together a plan and then give us an implementation guidance on what comes first, what comes second. And if you do this, then how does it impact that? So, those conversations, again, go back to engagement with the community so that they have a good understanding of what they're recommending and how it would fall out over the length of time that they would suggest we try to tackle these ideas. And when I was before the Connected City Advisory Board, I will say, they had a lot of interest in this, they were thrilled to see the level of detail that we were wanting to go into in this area, and the fact that they could dream big, which was something that I think is part of this corridor study is, is that, it's dreaming big. Some of this stuff may not be within the next 10 years, it may take longer to get to as a planning study, but ultimately, it's that ability to think differently about life in the corridor, so. Anything else, Melinda, anything? Sorry, I'm trying to fight her, sorry. And we'd stand for questions at this point.
Sure. Okay, do we have questions?
I saw some information there about timelines, but what would be the expected 2026?
That shouldn't have been in there, we should have deleted that out, so I do apologize, but, yeah, it would be.
It's highlighted.
Yeah, it's highlighted.
Highlighted, it's hard to miss.
Exactly, sorry. Should have been redacted. Well, what we're looking at is if we get approval tonight with whatever comments, like we did with the Connected City Advisory Board, they had a recommendation around social justice that we took and make sure we tried to refine in there through our outcomes and commitments with the strategic plan. And then from there, we would go ahead and get it out to bid, and that would start the process, so probably some, maybe the end of this month, maybe the beginning of March, it would actually go out to bid, and then it is a two-year study, because remember, we split-funded it, first $400,000 in this current fiscal year, and then the remainder, $275,000 in 2026. It's about an 18-month timeline is what we're seeing, so. Not untypical.
Well, I think the, I guess the question... Slash comment, I mean, the exciting thing about it is how many areas it covers. I mean, it's not just a neighborhood plan, it's not just a utilities or transportation plan, it's not an economic development plan, it's all of the above. And I'm not sure I've been involved in one of those, and maybe, Melissa, you have in your previous jobs, how do you try to balance those so you don't end up, I don't know, I mean, talking about the Lawrence Loop the whole time, or talking about economic development the whole time, or talking about the airport the whole time? How do you, what's, as you select a vendor, how do you do that?
Well, that was one of the key, I think, components, as we were looking about how we would do the approach on this, because we are aware of the fact that there's a lot of energy around different elements that are within this, and we wanted to make sure that they could be vetted through but not dominate the entire conversation, because we want to see how it integrates, how do they work together? So, that's why we selected the system that we're going for, which is having folks bring to us their idea of how they would tackle this problem. So, we as staff aren't providing the solution on how they're going to attack the problem, we're asking them, come to us, bring us your best design of how you would go about doing this and what that would look like.
Studies, studies like this are not dissimilar to what you see in a lot of bigger projects. There's five different ways to approach it, and really, the conversation when we are interviewing is going to be, how do you approach this? How do you have those conversations? How do you ensure you're striking a balance in the dialogue that you have? And so, there's lots of ways that you could possibly take it, that's one of the things we want to get with the RFP, is show us what you think is the best way to have this conversation, because there's at least 20, if not maybe even more, topics that could get folded into this conversation very quickly, and we want to make sure that we're not, like you said, you know, getting that balance incorrect. So, it's going to be part of the reviewing processes to see what they pitch forward as their best idea to bring it on.
And I have been involved in these in other places, so that was kind of trying to figure out how to put it together so that we could actually study the corridor, and there are other communities out there that have done these and done them successfully, so.
So, I had a question about the second or third paragraph in Section 1 that talks about the application of the information or the report that we're going to prepare, or the work product will be suitable and would meet the legal requirements for TIF districts. I think that's something I was interested to see, and I guess one question is, is that one of the reasons for, one of the main impetus for this level of granularity, and then also wide scope? And then also, if that's, if it's TIF-centric, does that add much cost to the, or, in other words, complexity to this? Does it make it more expensive for us to approach this, and is that valuable? Is there a fair value in receiving that additional, if there is additional cost associated with the TIF side of this thing?
The idea is to do the analysis to be able to tell us if what we're looking at when we get through this with the community is something that would qualify, or which economic development tools you would want to consider deploying. It's not to give us the full answer, it's more to say, hey, you've got something here, and based on what we're seeing from the values, that the project, if there's a project that comes out of it, that it would generate, that this might be something that you could apply CID to, a TDD to, any number of things, you know, IRBs we've used here. So, it's just to give us an idea of, yes, this is something that would qualify in this space.
So, any kind of tax-related?
Incentive, yeah.
Incentive that's going to help bring about rehabilitation on the property, and that's a focus of this as well. And I guess that brings me to the last question, is if you could summarize in a couple of paragraphs or words, how would you, what would the end work product, what's the goal of this? Because I kind of really, it's really hard to read through this, to understand your clear goal, and what's your end work product that you're looking for here, so that we make sure we steer the consultant and the product the right direction, I want to make sure I understand from you what you're looking for.
Do you want to give it a shot?
I can try.
And then I'll chase you.
Try to summarize it. The best way I've always described these is, it's like a diagnostic and a playbook. What you're gonna do is get a really in-depth understanding about what it is, and hopefully get a really enumerated list of, here is step 1, step 2, step 3, and it's gonna give us that kind of running order that we need to do, get our prerequisites correct before we go into the bigger thing. So, the, I hope that kind of summarizes.
Yes.
Very complex, very quickly.
Yes, that's, that was quick, thank you.
And the idea is to, as I explained it to the Connected City Advisory Board, is dream big and then figure out what's possible. And so, that's what's going to be interesting as this process has gone through. There's a number of, you know, things that come up when you talk to people about this, and they have ideas, and it's interesting, and so the question is, is where does the community land on that? And then, if that is a recommendation that comes out that rises to the top, then they're gonna have to look back at all that detail when it is pertaining to economic feasibility and determine if it's possible.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Other Commissioners, any questions this time?
Well, I guess I'd ask, it's more of a statement than a question, but I'll face this question, which is, for those who aren't studying this carefully, I mean, we call it the North Lawrence Plan, but it does include the areas that we've been talking about with the Loop and the areas around this building and the riverfront and access from the riverfront here, across the river, all the way to the airport.
And the idea here is to tie in our downtown up to I-70 and to the airport, and not to leave a segment out, so there's a little bit of intentional overlap, and obviously, the Loop component drove that as well.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I think that's it for now, we'll have to go ahead and take public comment. Public comment on Work Session Item 2?
Hi there. Hi, I'm Nancy Thelman. I live at 1547 North 2000 Road, and it's nice to see you all. I just wanted to say, I'm really excited about this corridor study, and I'm grateful to the city for taking it on, I'm surprised there is not a bunch of folks in North Lawrence, from North Lawrence here to say thank you to. In advance, I think it's gonna be a huge conversation and really important, and I think for them, for their neighborhood to really have some intentional time with you all to explore infrastructure issues and all the possibilities of that gateway activity, I'm excited for them and grateful. I wanted to say, looking at the map, I see how the map at the end of the packet shows a pretty large land use, or land area that goes outside of city limits and into Grant Township. And I just wanted to say, that'll probably mean that there'll be some conversations pulled in about land use and prime farmland and food production, and how that mixes with industry and all the aspirations that the city might have for that area. And while we're thinking holistically and thinking grand scale and all the possibilities, when I looked at the list of the studies you're going to include as you think about this and provide to whatever consultant you choose, I would respectfully ask that you include the Douglas County City of Lawrence Food System Plan, which you all are half and half with the food system, or the Food Policy Council. I don't remember what year that happened, but you were in on this, Lisa, your name is in here, when this was published, and I think it's been incorporated into the comprehensive plan. I just think it's really useful, and I think your consultant would be helped to have read it in advance before folks start talking about infrastructure for food systems, or the importance of prime agricultural land, or, you know, that whole conversation. There's also the new open space plan that the county just published, I'm not sure if that would be in your consideration, but it does include any rural lands, and there are rural lands in this map. So, that's all I'd say, thank you, thank you for doing this, look forward to it.
Appreciate it. Anybody else want to comment on Work Session Item 2? Okay. How about online, Jerry?
Okay. We have a few, so. They moved over. Steven Watts?
Hi, thank you. Hopefully, my system shows everything's working. How about you guys?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Hey, you know, it's wonderful to be able to opine on this North Lawrence corridor stuff, and I appreciate Ms. Seeben and Mr. Crick coming forward. I got confronted with a question from somebody, and this has to do with North Lawrence as well as budget. Quote, "The airport hangars are rented by the city. The city is the landlord, and the rent only goes up 3% each year. Our water bills don't go up only 3% each year, nor do our property taxes go up at the rate of 3%. The rent schedule needs to be adjusted." That's just one little area to think about for money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Hillary Carter?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to see you all digitally from afar. My name's Hillary Carter, I am the Chair of the Connected City Advisory Board, and just here to echo our appreciation for Melissa and Melinda and Trevor's work on this RFP. The Board did vote to pass our recommendation on to you guys unanimously. The only feedback we heard from Commissioners was to have the RFP reflect a centered commitment to equity and anti-displacement measures with any sort of economic redevelopment that happens along the corridor, and I see in the RFP that the staff have added that. So, we feel really confident in the goals and outcomes that we'd like to see, and we feel it aligns nicely with the city's strategic plans and everything that the Connected City Advisory Board does as well. Thank you, have a great evening.
Chelsea Hayden?
Good evening, Commissioners. Chelsea Hayden, I represent Grant Township, and so, we're excited kind of about this and having the city look into this. I just wanted to come today, because I looked at the map and a lot of that property that is covered is in Grant Township. So, the township would just like to be an active participant in this, and we'd like to be included from the beginning. We are very uniquely situated, and we have unique fire concerns and other resources that we have to really pay a lot of attention to, and we have quite a low budget just because of the lack of residents. So, this could have an impact on us in many ways you might not be thinking of at the moment, so we just request that we be a part of the process, and that our citizens and our businesses and the governmental entity itself are allowed to participate and are represented in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Jeffrey Hepler?
Good evening all, good evening, Commission. Jeffrey Hepler, 66044, I just wanted to say here, here, to the comments that have already been said. I'm excited about this study, I think North Lawrence needs some love, y'all, and let's make sure that it's spread around the right way. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Okay, how about some Commission comments on Item 2?
Got a couple of things, actually a couple of questions, too. Is Jeff or? Melinda, either one, yeah. I wanted to know if this study is gonna involve looking at the infrastructure as far as stormwater runoff and stormwater flow systems? Because I know that I saw the stormwater reports in there, it's one of the things you're looking at. looking at. Is it going to look at that?
Absolutely, and I have Melinda coming up, too. But absolutely, that is integral to this. We are obviously, you know, getting information on the new revised mapping from the state slash county on, you know, flood plain, floodways, and that will be part of this as well as we look at it. But definitely, stormwater, it's an issue we know exists up in North Lawrence. Melinda, want to talk in more detail?
Yeah, I would, excuse me. I would just add that we're wrapping up in the coming year the Stormwater Asset ID and Modeling Program, and so, we have already looked at portions, you know, north of the river, and so, this study won't redo any of that, but it will take the results of that study and that modeling into account as we're looking at, as we look at development and then what the impact would be on stormwater, and what would be needed in terms of detention or just improvements in general. It's very flat, so we want to make sure we're, we don't want to do any harm, I guess, the situation. We want to improve the stormwater situation.
Sure. Thank you. So, I would ask that you also involve the Car Valley Drainage District, because they are integral, they meet monthly, and they're integral in understanding the stormwater situation in that area. So, I'd appreciate it if you would wrap them into this somehow. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just had an add-on, just given our, the folks gave public comment to, you know, to see if we could also include a review of the open space plan and also a food policy as well, as part of this, since it includes such a wide rural area up north. So, I think it would only make sense.
Yeah, for sure.
One more thing. Are we working with the county on this, since some of this is in the county?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Not in the writing of the scope, but in the fact that as we go through and we select a consultant, we'll be pulling in stakeholders, and obviously, the county is part of that group, as well as the drainage district, and obviously, the egg side of things as well, and township.
Planning, you know, is split city-county, so we have the context and who to talk to and get the details on those plans, and I would expect, you know, lots of staff contact between city staff and county staff as part of this, because it is, it's one of those edge things. It's going to be everyone's conversation at some point.
Great. Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Mr. Sellers, do you have anything?
No, yeah, it's my only comment. It's like, yeah, it's, I'm glad to see this moving forward, and I would actually echo what Mr. Hepler said, you know, just that the attention being paid to North Lawrence in terms of the corridor and little parts in north and parts over here on, you know, around downtown, and integrating all that and studying infrastructure, economic development, and all their analysis. So, I'm excited to see what, you know, what'll come from it. So, thank you, guys.
I would just make sure we have the three votes up here to include those plans, and of course, all the municipalities, not that you wouldn't, but obviously, getting them all involved, including North Lawrence Neighborhood Association, as well as Grant Township and the Car Valley District. Again, you know, I asked my kind of question slash comment, and I'm most interested in how they're going to do this. I think it's such an ambitious program that's so exciting, and I liked the mayor's question about what we're going to get at the end. I look forward to how we get from here to there, and I think it's going to be a lot of work, and I think, but it's exciting work, it's fun work. So, I look forward to seeing who we select to help us through the process.
Yeah, and I just wanted to see if there was any way we could formulate a order of things that will somehow put priority over some existing or pre-existing issues with safety, specifically in North Lawrence with the rail crossing issues. Some of the money, the federal grants are available for some of these improvements, you know, raised walkways, those sort of things. I really feel like we have neglected that area for too long, and we've heard a lot of requests for us to move forward with some sort of planning and requests for grants for that operation, and I want to make sure that it's said out loud, because I think it's important to some folks up there, that we prioritize that in this study, because there's a lot of traffic running through that area, and there's, you know, continued chance for, you know, both nuisance and safety issues. So, for me, that would be, from a prioritization standpoint, I feel like it's important for us to really get on that as quick as possible and see if there's money available through this study for us to get on it and get some money in place to help that. Based on all the information I've heard from people, it seems like an easy thing to do, but I think if we had the right information, it might be a little easier. So, I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
Melissa, just to add to that, I think what was proposed to us during the budget process, and I do appreciate how we were able to reincumber funds and be able to use them in a way that is going to, just like our asset management, put us in a place where we can forecast, at least put, invest money into receiving a forecast of how we can move within this corridor and how, and maybe the blueprint to how we can do that in other aspects moving forward in our city. So, I think that's the biggest piece, is that this is, this is a huge undertaking for us, because, you know, this is what cities do. So, we're a city now. We weren't a city back in the 70s, but we're a city by definition now, and so, these are things that cities do, and so, we're kind of putting our big city britches on and getting to work with this. And so, it is going to be a huge undertaking. I'm excited about what, whomever the vendor is, that will be able to produce this, because it's going to have a lot of different, I think, moving aspects to it, that will not only be able to speak to the pieces of our commitments and outcomes of our strategic plan, but also how we can be very nimble and how it can make us nimble and flexible for the next four years, since we don't know what's going to be ahead of us as far as funding. So, this is going, this is the first step in putting us in a position so that we can be a lot more strategic, and I think that is, that within itself is, we're creating opportunities for something that could be a legacy builder for this governing body to lead for the next governing body 10 or 15 years from now. So, I think if we think of it in that way, not necessarily waiting to see how we can intersect funding that's available now that may not be available by the time our vendors are able to go through and process and create this document, this guiding document for us, playbook, but we're doing the work to get there, and I think that's putting words into action, and I think that's what this governing body wants to see, and you guys are doing that. So, I do appreciate that, and I'm excited to see what comes of it.
Great. Anything else? I agree. All right. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is commission items. Do we have any items that commissioners want to bring up?
I have one. The, and maybe Jeff doesn't leave too quickly, in case I have to ask him this question, but the Development Code, there's a series of cleanup amendments that'll go from the, go in front of the Planning Commission in February that Jeff and his staff is walking on and gathering information on, and I know there's been some discussion, I've had some discussion with some of the neighborhood groups about having a conversation about the occupancy. Maybe we have set it at five under the current code and having a discussion about either moving to four or three on that, or as it stands today. And I think we're not in a point where we initiate amendments, but we're at a point where we want to make sure, I think, with talking with staff, that if two other people are willing to have that conversation, we can get that on the Planning Commission agenda to go along with the cleanup amendment, so they can hear that and make their recommendation to us, and then we can take that up at the same time we take up the other amendments. So, if there's two people willing to talk about the occupancy.
Definitely.
I would be.
Okay. You have the numbers.
Thank you.
What do you need, Jeff?
Okay. Anything else on commission items?
I do have one. I know, I've kind of brought this up in the past, and I know we, in December, we set our agenda for the upcoming legislative year, and so, more of a discussion that can be facilitated through the city manager with commissioners is, how do we ensure we know that there's capacity for staff, as well as for commissioners, to keep an eye on bills that may impact our agenda, and how do we want to move forward with, you know, identifying those things with staff, and whether or not there is a opportunity, or at least a willingness, for this governing body to take the charge, and whether that's wanting to speak on a bill through testimony, writing testimony, or what that looks like. We don't necessarily have a position per se that does that, so this is shared work and responsibility, and I know that there are several bills that are there, they've been introduced, they may not go anywhere. One of the things we always talk about in the legislature is that a bill never dies, so it may stay in committee until the very end of the, you know, to the very last day, and then it may pop up in a gut and go bill. So, it's just, how do we, and not necessarily that we need an answer today, but I do want this governing body to think about, how do we, as commissioners, help carry that, carry that responsibility, where staff may be limited in their capacity, but helping to keep things abreast and an eye on bills that impact not only just our agenda point, our policy agenda, but most importantly, our rights as a governing body and home rule, and anything that may impact the culture and mission and vision of our community. So, just wanted to bring that up, to help some visioneering between us as a body.
I think that's important. We got to see what's coming down the road, and I don't know if we have time or the expertise to do that individually, but I think each of us could focus on things we pay attention to, you know, in our area of expertise, and maybe know what's coming, but I do know there's some people out there that are a lot smarter than me, that are at the house every day and know what's going on. It might be helpful to maybe pay attention, especially what's happening in the next 12 months. So, you know, who knows what's going to go. So, for me, it's, I would encourage, if we could have any staff time to do that, but obviously, they are precious resources right now, so. But I'll be happy to try to keep abreast on things, but I would welcome others to do the same.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that conversation. I think there's a lot that happens quickly in the legislature.
Very much so, and it's only getting, it's only moving at a much faster pace. I think, in speaking with leadership with the league of municipalities, there's an opportunity to maybe streamline that, because I don't see this pace changing anytime soon. But I think there's some missed opportunities where, again, to your point, Mayor, where you may not be a subject matter, I may not be a subject matter expert on a certain bill, but that doesn't mean that we don't want to, we don't want our voice not to be, we don't want our voices to not be heard. So, how do we ensure that, that whether it's signing on to someone's testimony or being able to just make a call or make a note?
Okay. I'd be happy to help with that. So, anything else? Commission items? All right. Feature agenda items? Not a whole lot going on in the next few weeks.
I guess, just sticking with my theme of the Development Code, as we start to look out, I mean, obviously, we want this demolition moratorium to come up before April 1st, so it can be in place by April 1st. So, I don't know if it's, if that's one that requires two weeks publication or what, but I guess I'd like to make sure, we still have time, but I'd like to make sure we get on the agenda here, and I think there's some people interested in it, and so, the more we can figure out when it is on the agenda, the better.
And then, the permit parking program, too. I think that's really, you know, crucial, I believe.
Yes.
We've already done a ton of historically homework on this issue. I'm sure that's something that we could jump right back into, not immediately, but in earnest, so that people know that we're talking, that we're serious about doing that, because I do, I heard a lot of discussions, if we could do that, then that might help people understand and deal with some of the other changes that we've put in place. So, for me, I feel like that's also pretty important, so, and something we probably should have done a long time ago.
Yeah, the permit parking was included as part of the 2019 parking study.
Yeah.
They laid it out in there.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Anything else?
Real quick, just quick congratulations. I know I attended the Lawrence Douglas County Firefighters Awards Gala banquet on, last Friday, so just wanted to give a quick shout-out to firefighter Jasmine Ramirez for winning Firefighter of the Year.
Oh, wow, that's, congratulations. Yeah, that's great. Okay, anything else? Okay, city manager's report?
The only item under city manager's report is ex parte notification for all of you.
Okay. And then, the commission calendar, the meeting list?
That's a public comment.
Sorry? Oh, that's right. Public comment. Sorry. Any public comment on the city manager's report? Thank you for reminding me. Any online?
Yes, we do have one.
Thank you. Oh, hey, please. Yes. Is this on the city manager's report and just general public comment?
General public comment.
We'll be in that, about a few minutes, as soon as we're done with these other comments, okay? Thank you.
Lawrence Accountability?
So, could we have Craig tell us more about that ex parte communication, or maybe have you commissioners ask more questions about that? It's talked about in a public meeting, but it's passed over real quickly, and, you know, you guys do owe it to the public to help educate them about what's going on and not try to just pass things by like that. When I hear ex parte, I'm hearing something that might be of a concern, that there might be a conflict or a potential conflict that was forced to be disclosed, and I just think it deserves a little more discussion than just a pass-by, especially for the number of citizens that you represent. And then, the last thing about the city manager's report, again, we really do need a city manager. I hear that across the town, that we need a new city manager. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So, to that point, I appreciate you pointed it out. I think the ex parte conversation was about a 1.74 acre of land regarding a rezoning. Do you want me to read that off to make it clear?
Sure.
The rezoned Z's 24, 10, 11, approximately 1.74 acres located at 3633 Peterson Road from RS 10 Single Dwelling Residential District to RS 5 Single Dwelling Residential Plan Development Overlay District to be incorporated into the Monterey Gardens Plan Development submitted by Land Plan Engineering on behalf of SOJAC. So, frankly, it's a, it's a, it's more of a formal, or it's a procedural matter at this point, so I have nothing to disclose.
I have nothing to disclose.
It's not on for tonight.
No, it's not.
Just informing you of a future item.
It's coming.
So that you are aware that you'll be needing.
I understand that completely, but I'll just talk about it now, since it came up. Thank you. Anybody else want to comment on the city manager's report?
We do have one on, another one online, if you're talking about the.
Yes, online. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this, and firstly, thank you so much, Greg Owens, for reminding my good friend, Mike Dever, that the public comments on this. And hey, that's great. I mean, I really didn't have a whole lot to comment on the public, on the city manager report, other than the fact that, you know, it's an opportunity to opine where you can't otherwise. So, I'd like to hear the city manager report on when the public is going to be able to access consent agenda items, once again, as a check and balance to talk about it, instead of asking, "Mother, may I," to a town commissioner who may or may not, usually may not, that's my experience, allow you to pull an item for consent agenda matters. And so, maybe the city manager could report on just how much time does that take? Anyway, thank you. Aloha.
Thanks, Mr. Watts.
That's all the public.
Okay. Anybody else in the room on the city manager's report?
Does that include yours?
The, this, the prior study? There was, we were able to talk about that previously, but you can come up at public comment, and I'll let you address that, whatever, since we, you weren't able to talk about it before. Normally, I don't go back to those things, but we'll let you do that during public comment, okay? Thank you. Anybody else to speak to the City Managers Report? Anybody want to discuss the calendar?
I do have a question for you all. So there are three Commissioners attending NLC, so we need to discuss if we're going to cancel the March 11th meeting since we won't have a quorum, or if you, I'm assuming no one is planning to attend virtually.
I'm wanting to go to the NLC conference. I plan to be traveling Tuesday night, so I'm back for work on Wednesday, so I don't, I think I'll be traveling during the Commission meeting, so I don't think I could zoom in on that night.
You wouldn't zoom in, you'd be here.
No, no, no. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I'd be in the air.
Got it. Understood. Thank you. Well, I'd be fine with that if it's going to be, if we're not going to have a quorum or it would be all online. It's kind of hard to manage that.
Yeah. I'd probably lean more towards moving it or canceling it. Yeah. Or just like, you know, moving it to like, I guess, March 25th is.
It's open.
If we needed to, I guess if we needed to have a meeting.
So, yeah, so is that, so is that, should we just have a placeholder in the event we need a meeting so that we have three meetings in March?
We would have to roll on to have a special meeting.
Sorry?
We would need to vote to have a special meeting on the.
Right.
And we can, we can bring that back next week if we look at the agendas and if we feel like we need it, then we can bring appropriate action back for you all to either cancel.
Would that work with your calendars, though, if we did move to the 25th right now, off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, yeah.
Yeah. Though at the moment.
Well, if one or two of us aren't here, that'd be okay.
No.
I just want to make sure.
I could do the 25th, but at the moment, our future Genus are looking not over.
No, it's not too busy.
We might be able to stack some things. We might be able to stack some things on the 4th and the 18th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll look at canceling it unless for some reason there's something that just has to absolutely go in March, then we'll, then we'll bring back something to move it, but.
That's okay with me. Is everybody okay with that?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sherry.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to the end of our live broadcast, and we'll go ahead and give everybody a minute to clear out of the room and then move on to open public comment in just a minute.